Well, welcome everyone. This is my first interview for Hello Washington. I'm Janine and this is my guest, Tom Clark. He is running for the Everett School Board position at large, position number three. And we are here today to talk to Tom and talk to you and allow you to have firsthand answers and life stories and experience from this man, Tom Clark. And so I'm really excited about his campaign. It's, we know it's an uphill battle, but we hope that when people hear what this man has to say about his passions about school board and our kids and the future of our kids, that you will also agree that he is the best candidate. So, welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Janine. And I'm equally as excited about your podcast because I know you'll keep it real on here. A lot of people are afraid to dive into certain subjects, and I know that's definitely not you. So I think I look forward to being a fan of your podcast.
Well, I hope I don't suck at it and that I keep it going without life, you know, dragging everything down. So, all right. Well, to start out, I am a huge person, a huge person. I am a huge believer in storytelling. And I feel that that is the best way to actually get to know someone is to hear their story regardless of their political belief. Because I think we all have way more in common with our belief systems and our values than, than we like to admit to each other. But we've just been divided by all the things that you and I have talked about and many other people. And so tell me about yourself, you know, give us a rundown where you come from, how you got here.
Well, I was originally born in Waco, Texas and raised in San Antonio, Texas. So I'm a proud Texan. My dad's family was from New York City by way of Ireland and my mom's family was from northern Mexico. So growing up in San Antonio with kind of a mixed cultural heritage, being immersed in Hispanic culture, but then also being very proud of my Irish culture as well. It was a wonderful experience. I had a great childhood. I have four siblings who are very supportive. We don't agree on everything politically, as is the norm in a lot of families. But I grew up with four siblings that were very supportive. Then my dad took me to my first political event when I was about eight years old. And I remember, you know, just feeling the energy of the crowd and then also the energy of the people that were running for office. And it was really something that piqued my interest. And then over the years, I got involved when I was a kid and went with my dad to all kinds of political events, from Congress bus tours to going to see President Obama speak when he came to San Antonio, to going to see Jerry Adams, who's an Irish politician, when he came to San Antonio to speak, going to see him. So really just got a great introduction to politics from my dad. When he was watching PBS and listening to NPR, my interest was piqued while my other siblings were like, wow, that's really boring. So always I've kind of been a political nerd and I've never been in a position to run for office until now or felt inspired to run for office till now, but I've always loved politics. My dad unfortunately passed away about a year and a half ago. I think he would be really proud of the fact that I'm still engaged and proud of the fact that I'm running. I don't want to leave my mom out because I was raised by an amazing, strong Chicana woman who taught me to love my culture, to love my neighbors and to love my family. And she was a teacher for over 20 years. My aunt was a teacher. My family has always seen and appreciated the power of education. So I think running for school as my first elected position just kind of comes natural to me.
Yeah, I mean, it, it shows how much having a supporting, loving family and having a support system can lead to better outcomes because, you know, you've expressed to me and told me stories about, you know, the challenges that you had. Why don't you share a little bit with us, whatever you feel comfortable to kind of give people, you know, the, the impression of the struggles that you've gone through and how for me, that aligns more with the general population and what we see, especially in Everett and our school district. We have, you know, we have such a mix of people that live in Everett, like so many cities. And so I just think it would be really important for the people, pardon me, to, to understand how that has impacted you.
Yes. So my dad, when I was about 13, my dad got sick. He got throat cancer and during that time, I kind of, you know, didn't have a strong male role model in my life. And I got into a lot of trouble from about the age of 13 through about the age of 16. When I was 16, I got arrested and was incarcerated for a year in the juvenile system in Texas. And they don't kind of segregate as far as by crime, who you're incarcerated with. Cause I, so I was incarcerated with people who were charged with like very serious crimes from like aggravated assault to murder, to drug crimes, and then mine were kind of just more minor property crimes, but we were all housed together. So I got to meet a lot of people, hear a lot of different stories and experience what it's like to have your freedom, be deprived of your freedom. And that was a very eye opening experience to me. I realized that we have a really inequitable society, especially when it comes to the criminal justice system, especially when it comes to juveniles. But fortunately I had some supportive adults that stuck by my side and they weren't all family members. There was a lot of great teachers, family friends and community leaders that I've met along the way that really invested in me and took an interest in me. And then when I was 16, I was able to get my GED in a correctional facility. And then I was work service industry jobs through college and law school and, and then was able to become an attorney. And it wouldn't have been possible without a lot of folks who really, you know, invested in me and thought that, hey, you know, this person is valuable, this person has inherent worth. And just because they made a mistake, that's not the end of their story. And I think it's really important that we have leadership that takes that approach to our children. Because there are children right now who are in our juvenile facilities, who could be our future doctors, our future lawyers, our future teachers and our future union workers. If they have adults that believe in them and empower them to succeed.
Absolutely. And that's an amazing answer because the support systems that are lacking is what has got us here. As you and I have talked about many times, that the social safety nets, the community support, the, the community centers where people can get together, where we can actually come together as a community and maybe not be so afraid of each other and actually come together and talk to each other and realize that we have these joint struggles, that we, we bleed the same blood, people. Like you may not think that you do, but we all bleed the same blood. So I can appreciate your struggle. I didn't know that your father had passed away from throat cancer. My dad actually had throat cancer too. Got it when I was like 13 years old and he basically spent the last half of his life, you know, living in the VA. The probably the last 10, 10 or so years of his life because he couldn't function on his own and nobody could take care of him. So it is a struggle. And then, you know, you don't have that support system of your dad, your mom's struggling. You have siblings, like all of those things are compounding. And when you turn around and look and you have no help as a parent, and then your kids are acting up because they're sad, they're angry, they don't know how to deal with these emotions. And then they go to a school that penalizes them for simply trying to figure out their own emotions, which seems to lead to a lot of these cases of abuse, neglect, children being removed from homes. And again, you're going to stick them with total strangers that they don't know. When maybe if the support had been at home from society, things would have turned out differently. So I, I, yeah, I can appreciate your struggles. And again, this is, this is why though, I feel, I felt so compelled to want to help you in your campaign. Because you are representative of what the majority of the people experience in life with these struggles. And I think you would have a better understanding of what our kids would need in order to be successful as far as programs, emotional support, mental health support and so on. So tell me how you think that, that experience makes you a good candidate for school board? How it, how it makes you relate? I mean, we've obviously talked about how it makes you relate to other people. But how, how do you, how do you think all of that is going to shape your approach with the challenges that you've seen in the school district and obviously on our current school board?
Well, I think the first thing is understanding other people and having empathy and having respect for different perspectives. And also knowing that someone's story can be changed dramatically by having people who care about them. And thinking that my neighbor's struggle is my struggle as well. I think a lot of times we see someone struggling, whether that be a student who's struggling to keep up or a neighbor in the community struggling to meet their basic needs. And we say, oh, that's so unfortunate. If we start seeing that as our struggle and we take ownership of our community and of our schools and of our students. And if we really have as much respect for their human rights and their dignity and, and their right to pursue the American dream as we do for our own, I think we would have a better society. I think that I bring a perspective that deeply cares about my neighbors, that deeply cares about our schools. And I think that makes me a great candidate for school board.
I was actually going to play part of the candidate forum that the League of Women Voters hasn't published tonight at the end of this. And I'm not going to, but I do want to talk about some of the things that were brought up as far as budget, LifeWise, and how you would approach differently and for, for some of my people that are maybe over here from my TikTok on abortion defenders talking about this, LifeWise is a Christian nationalist academy that Tom and Shayna Langley, who's also running that we need to support also, I'm going to try to get her on here if she wants to come on, if she has the time, in, in how their approach, as Tom and I have discussed, we've had a lot of discussions. The current school board's approach is very feckless. It is very, in my opinion, it is very feckless and they are not meeting the moment right now with this challenge and finding ways to get around this problem that has been created by them admittedly opening the door to this program to come into our public school and take kids out with parental permission. Where they could have done something more to tighten up their own policy, but they're just choosing not to because they're so afraid of the Christian nationalists. And full disclosure for you people that follow me on abortion defenders. Tom, here's a progressive Christian and I am a dyed-in-the-wool atheist. And if we can come together and talk about this, we all can come together and talk about this. So I know that was a lot. If you need, if you need me to repeat, repeat any of that, let me know.
No, I, I think it's interesting because that's where we talk about finding commonality, right? I think we both care about our, our neighbors. We both care about our community and we found commonality in that. And I think that I have a deep respect for you and your beliefs. And I think that that's how we should be as a society, not just shy away from having difficult conversations with other people who don't think exactly like us. So it has been an amazing privilege to know you, Janine, and I really appreciate your support. And I don't want to get too distracted from the question. I think the, the current school board, the problem is they don't think anything's their problem. Or they think that new or novel problems that come up fit neatly within the policies that they already have. And I disagree because with LifeWise, we have a Christian nationalist organization that is, that has identified our public schools as a mission field and is trying to carry out indoctrination of our children. Now, LifeWise taking kids out of school is completely different to me than a parent taking a child out of school for any reason, which I completely support. I believe that parents should be able to take their children out of school for any reason. And I believe that a parent taking a child out of school for religious purposes should be an excused absence. However, I think whenever a third party organization comes in and tries to penetrate our schools and spread a very hateful exclusionary ideology, that has to be met with scrutiny from the school board. And we've had school boards in Ohio and Kentucky stand up to LifeWise and our school board says they can't. And I think that's hogwash. Like, I mean, which is a, I guess a fancy word for bullshit. And, and you know, our school board needs to have a spine. Our school board needs to protect all of our children, including our atheist children, including our agnostic children, including our Muslim children and our Jewish children, because not all of our kids are Christians. And they should not have to have this ideology introduced into their schools. I believe in secular public schools and LifeWise believes in deconstructing our secular public schools. So that's why I think we need to meet them with the appropriate force and that force is making policy that protects our kids.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree. I, I still am just thinking back on the interactions, the going to school board meetings and the things that I've witnessed and seen and just kind of like the, you know, kind of hand washing of it while our policy book says this. It's like, but you write the policy. You don't even have to go after religion. You could just look at the policy and go, the original parental release policy to a third party did not have the intent of releasing to a third party that shows up in a LifeWise bus with LifeWise shirts on as an organization to take the kids. Like that's not what it was meant for. It was meant for what a parent needs, help, can't pick up their kid and they trust somebody that is not them to pick up their child. And it has now been bastardized, just like the First Amendment and a lot of other things with, and used as a loophole to, you know, the camel is in the tent, as Kathleen would like to say. And we got to try and push the camel in the tent back out and it's going to take everybody. And so I, I'm appreciative and I'm hopeful that folks like you and Shayna, being younger with fresher perspectives and the conviction and courage to do something about this are elected. And I'm hoping even a little bit of any social media I do helps that because you guys are our future. Your kids are our future. All, I mean, it's just, it's so interconnected. As far as the budget goes, when you were, we were, when the candidate forum was happening, can you tell us more about the budget? Because right, these levies are coming up and it's going to be a battle.
Right. So one thing that I think was very apparent at the candidate forum that was kind of surprising to me was the fact that Shayna's opponent, who is Roman, kind of was very dismissive of like million dollar cuts to the budget. He's like, oh, $1.4 million is a drop in the bucket. And I think for our hardworking families in Everett and the surrounding area that encompasses Everett School District, $1 million is a lot of money. That's, that's double some of the home values in our area. I mean, we need to make sure that we have a school board that respects the money that the community entrusts them with. And just because somebody's a CPA or was a lawyer 20 years ago, doesn't make them good at, at balancing budgets. Are scrutinizing budgets because that's what we need to do. We don't just need to make sure our budget makes sense on a spreadsheet. We need to scrutinize it to make sure it's working for the community. It's very interesting that you mentioned coming up on the February special election, we're going to have a bond and levy whereby the school district is going to ask for over $400 million. Now, I feel like when that kind of an ask made of the community, the school board really has to provide an accounting for where all the money goes. And I believe that we should support funding for our schools. However, a lot of our taxpayers have owned their homes for 30 years or more. They are retirees, they're on fixed incomes. And so they're concerned by even a small hike to their property taxes. So I want to make sure that they feel like they're getting their money's worth when they invest in our schools. So that's very important to me. Also, something that hasn't been explored is the bond is for capital improvement projects. So the thing about capital improvement projects are whenever they're done, there's a general contractor and then a lot of subcontractors involved and there's a competitive bidding process. However, I recently found out that not all of our projects are completed with union labor. I would like to see some sort of community agreement or project labor agreement. Like what Seattle Public Schools does is with every capital improvement project over $5 million, they have a community, what they call CWA, which ensures that union labor is working on these projects, which makes sure that the projects are delivered on time and that the workers are protected and that the dollars stay in the community. I think it's important that we explore things like that when we're, before we present new bonds to the community. So I think there was diligence done. I think there, there was a bond committee that met and got some public feedback. However, I think there's still a little bit more polish that can be done on this bond. And I don't know if the cake's already baked, but I would like to see something in there that incorporates a PLA or CWA to make sure that we have union workers working on our capital improvement projects.
Well, I didn't know a bunch of that. So thanks for telling me. And I don't know anything about this, this Seattle project. So I, I don't know if it's something that is seen as being effective and cost saving or whatever, but it's something I guess I should be looking into if that's something that you're suggesting. And I mean, I at this point have know you and trust that you're, you know, probably talking about something that's good because we do have the same vision and values. But it's nice to know that you know about those alternatives and you can talk about that. As far as, so you, we, you know, right, you'd have school board things, but as a parent up to this point, being in the Everett School District, how long have you been in Everett now?
My kids have been going to Everett Public Schools. It's their fifth school year in Everett Public Schools.
And what have you seen as some of the greatest achievements for the Everett School District when it comes to students and some failures? Or just continued stumbling that you would like to see smoothed out to the benefit of the students and their parents?
I think we have amazing teachers and I think our teachers, sometimes their abilities to, and with, to interact with our children make up for some issues that we have with sometimes with administrators or even district policy. Because we have amazing teachers who go above and beyond. They, we get great outcomes with our students overall. However, there are some disparities. There are some behavioral issues that teachers have to face in the classroom, including sometimes some children who become like distracted to the learning environment or become violent or different things like that. And of course, there's always a backstory. However, I think that we need policies that address the wellness concerns and mental health concerns that our students face as opposed to imposing harsh discipline on our students. Now that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that we let the students run wild at school, but I am saying that we need to address the underlying causes of the conduct instead of just having disciplinary policies that are all always punitive instead of restorative. Because I've seen districts have district policies like that. And that just leads to perpetuate the school to prison pipeline and, and leads to students' conduct being criminalized or over criminalized. So the, one of the great assets that we have is our teachers. One thing that I see as an area of improvement is at my son's school, Jackson Elementary, when the district was trying to save money a few years back, they cut an administrator. So now there's only one principal there. They used to have a principal and an assistant principal. That assistant principal was very valuable to the community because that assistant principal helps with student conduct inquiries, helps to support our teachers and helps to make sure that our students are having a safe and successful school day. So when the district cut an administrator and did so kind of on a whim, it kind of raised a red flag to me. It was like, wait a minute, it's this easier for them to cut an administrator position at, at an elementary school? So I think that that's kind of out of whack. I think with something like that happens, it really impacts the school community and it shouldn't be done just to save money. I think if we want to save money, we should cut some of the salary and benefits that the top 10 employees at Everett Public Schools make. Because the top 10 employees at Everett's Public Schools make over $3 million. So maybe we're a little too top heavy and we need to cut some executive positions instead of cutting administrator positions.
Believe that people, that's for sure. What is something that you want to share with us that nobody really asks you and you think is valuable for people to know about you as a human, as a father, as a future school board member, hopefully, that you bring to the table that you don't think that your competition does?
I have a deep respect for people with disabilities. I'm neurodivergent. I have ADHD. I've kind of, I know how much of a struggle that can be in a school environment. I have a child with autism who's on IEP and actually both of my sons are IEPs. And I've seen the struggle that that IEP process can be for parents. Advocating for my children through that process, I've kind of learned that there's a lot of policies and there's a lot of rights that parents have that they don't always exercise because they're unaware of the, all the rights that they have. So I want to make sure that our parents of students with disabilities are well informed and know that they're just as valuable a member of the IEP team as the administrator, special education teachers and other teachers that are on that team. That's one thing that I think that a parent, a lot of parents don't know. I think that when they go into IEP meetings, they think that this is a process where you're being told what's best for your children. But it's also an opportunity for you to advocate for your children and make sure that they're getting the support they need and make sure that they are, that the district's doing everything that they're supposed to, to provide the proper learning environment for your students. So I think bringing that perspective of a special education parent. And then also, one thing that kind of like really threw me for a loop was in the League of Women Voters forum. My opponent said, when trying to balance the budget, she would cut sports. And that kind of just like blew my mind because we already have a fairly lean athletics program in Everett Public Schools. And I think it's something that we need to actually expand, not cut. Because sports provides opportunities for children to learn important lessons in citizenship, teamwork. And they carry those lessons into life and into adulthood. And I think it makes them better citizens and, and better workers and makes them better able to know how to cooperate in society. So I would not cut sports. I would not cut the arts. And I think that I, as someone who played sports and was involved in theater, I have a deep respect for the arts and for sports and how valuable they are as part of our district.
Yeah. I mean, I, sports is just another layer for some kids of, of support that they don't have at home. They look up to their coaches. They have the other people on their team. And they have, you know, that whole environment where they might feel more loved. That's where they feel more supported. That's where they feel safe. And so I agree, sorry, a little scratchy throat tonight. I agree that thinking about cutting anything for kids whatsoever before any rich person cuts their salary or well-paid person to me is just, to me, it's just abysmal. I don't understand it. I don't understand, there's only so many things that you can have in life to make you a happy person, right? It's not things that make you happy. It's who you are on the inside. And if you could go to work every day knowing that you're just fine with all the things that you've acquired with your six-figure salary and the kids aren't getting what they need. I just, they're, to me, as society wise, not just Everett School Board, but there's just a massive problem with that. And of course, that's a whole long conversation and I'm sure we'll talk again here because we like talking to each other. But I think I'll wrap it up so I don't inundate these folks with too much information. I appreciate you coming on. I appreciate all the hard work that you are doing to try to get elected into this board position, especially with your busy schedule that you have being a family law attorney and trying to help folks out in your community. I mean, you're just a really good, solid grounded person and I couldn't be more proud to talk to you and help you out with your campaign. I hope that, I hope that we win. I don't even care if I win by five votes. We gotta win this.
Yes.
We gotta get better people on the school board and I look forward to grinding it out from now until election day. So thank you so much, Tom Clark, for being here. If you guys enjoyed this, I'm going to try to get Shayna on and I'd love to have your comments and support Tom's campaign, even if you don't have a lot of money or if you just have some time. I post all of his updates. He's Tom Clark for School Board on Facebook, Clark with an E. And they post their stuff on Snohomish County Indivisible. So if you're a part of that, it shows all of when he's going to be doing sign waving, door belling from now until the end of the election. So thank you so much, Tom, for being here and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Janine. Thank you for the support and the community work that you do. And the fact that you are willing to step out and take the leap of faith and start a podcast to provide a space for people to come here, be real and spit the truth because we need more of that. I think there are a lot of podcasts, but we need more podcasts where you can say whatever you want without, and just have an open forum. And I want to also say that everybody please support, support Shayna Langley for School Board.
Absolutely.
She's a wonderful candidate. She's a teacher. She's been a teacher for 10 years. And during that time, she has advocated for other teachers, students and their families. So she's a great candidate as well.
Oh, her, her education, her experience, her drive, her love of education and her kids is top notch and unparalleled. And her opponent shouldn't even have a dog in this fight, quite frankly. I mean, we gotta make this happen. So you take care, friend, and I'll see you tomorrow. Take care, everyone.
Thank you, Janine. Have a wonderful evening.
You too sweetheart. Bye bye. Well, that's it. That's my first guest. That's Tom Clark, running for school board for position number three. And I, I just can't say enough of good things about that man. I mean, you just watched that. He is a grounded, smart individual that represents us more than his opponent does. And here's the thing, I don't think Anna Marie Jackson- represents us more than his opponent does. And here's the thing, I don't think Anna Marie Jackson Lawrence is a bad person. I just don't think she's the right person for this moment, as I think like a lot of Democrats. And a lot of people that have been in office a long time or have this old mindset, they're not prepared for what is here. They're not prepared for what is happening. So please support his campaign. The election is just a few ish weeks away and ballots go out this week. And we had to hit the ground running because of everything that happened. If you've been following any of the Everett School Board kerfluffle, the issues with the Lees and their flyers, Bruno, there, the the Lees flyers are continuing to go out and they are continuing to harm two very good, qualified and well-rounded people's campaigns that would do perfectly good for our children on the school board. And we need to support them. So everybody take care. Welcome to Hello, Washington. And I hope to talk to you guys soon and tell stories and build community. Bye bye.